Alrighty, good afternoon, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. Welcome, great to see everyone. We're gonna go ahead and start off with our pledge of allegiance and today it will be led virtually by Hannah Espinoza's 4th grade class at Vermont Elementary School. So if we can all go ahead and stand, put our right hand over our hearts.
Hey, your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, you're ready.
Alright, great job. I miss Espinoza's class and those lovely students and they had quite the Read Across America event on Friday as well, but I'm sure we'll hear about that in board comments. We will move on to 1.3, approval of the agenda.
Second.
Alright, it was moved by Dr. Flores and we'll say second by Dr. Daddy Rogers. Any discussion on the agenda?
Can we pull consent?
Will we pull items later? When we get on consent?
Anything else on the agenda other than consent?
Other than consent, no, thank you.
Okay. Alright, we'll go ahead and vote then. Thank you, Dr. Flores, for clarification. Alright, agenda carries, we'll move on to 1.4 and our inspirational message today is from Mr. Our Vice President, excuse me, Danny Tillman.
Thank you, President Dr. Wyatt, I appreciate that. You know, it's rare that there's times in our district when we have a substantial amount of extra money. And it's kinda weird that the pandemic actually helped the district financially in terms of the federal government giving us extra money to mitigate some of the circumstances. But because of that, we're in a situation where we must spend the money and I want to commend district staff and Mr. Sullivan's group, they said all the money we had to spend for 2021, 2022 is gonna be spent on time. That is a big deal because you have districts throughout the state that haven't spent the money. So they really have millions of dollars that will go back to the federal government because the money wasn't spent. There's additional money for 2022, 2023. So I want to encourage the district staff, teachers, employees for things like supplies and equipment that we refer to your supervisors and make sure that we are able to let folks know the things that will make a big difference for our students. And in terms of the board, I know I talked to Mr. Irvin earlier and Mr. Sullivan, so I know we're gonna address it at the second interim budget LCAP update where some of the priorities even that the board has can be satisfied in ways where it's gonna benefit our students. Don't wanna lose sight of the equipments and instruments that we provide our students, make sure we use the money at this time to replenish those devices while we can. And technology also, which is a big deal in the district. We don't wanna lose the opportunity to spend the money on things that make a difference for our kids, especially when you're actually in a predicament that if you don't buy those things, you actually will lose the money. So I encourage everyone to work together to do that. And then I just wanna thank the students, the parents, the teachers, the other certificated employees, classified employees, administrators, our superintendent, and my fellow board members. And we've been through a whole lot this year and we did it together. And because of that, we were able to do it a lot better than other districts throughout the state. And I just wanna encourage us to keep working together. This week, we had the option and gave the option for folks who want to wear a mask that can continue wearing a mask and those who do not wanna wear a mask can take it off. And I think this week, we feel a whole lot better than we did last week. And I think it's just encouraging and we get a feeling that maybe we're coming out of this pandemic and be able to move forward and get back to where things are more normal. And with that, I'd like to say thank you very much.
Alrighty, thank you, Vice President Tillman, and I love your inspiration of spending money, especially when it comes to our kids and staff, so.
That is very inspirational.
I hope we do a fantastic job of that, I'll just say that to all of us up here, that let's spend that money on our kids and our staff, definitely so. Alrighty, we'll move on to 2.1, Outstanding Achievement Awards. And the Board of Education is pleased to honor outstanding students, parents, and staff from Dominguez Elementary School, Rodriguez Prep High Middle School, Arrow View Middle School, and San Gregorio High School. We wish to recognize and thank these individuals for their outstanding accomplishments and commitment to making hope happen. Ms. Ontavetos.
Yes, thank you very much, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, Board of Education members, Superintendent and Cabinet. It is my pleasure again to be with you to recognize outstanding achievement in our district. And as you noted, we will this evening be recognizing students, parents, and staff from Dominguez Elementary School, Rodriguez Prep Academy Middle School, San Gregorio High School, and Arrow View Middle School. The Board recognizes outstanding students to build self-esteem and to honor academics, athletics, fine arts, citizenship, and also most improvement. Our Board also recognizes outstanding parents and employees. In order to be consistent with how we have done this recognition all year, we've invited our honorees to receive their recognition items at their school instead of during this presentation, although I do think that there are some in the audience and we'll ask them to stand when that time comes. We have also invited all of those who are being honored to watch this presentation on YouTube and so therefore we definitely want for the applause to be loud and the recognition to be very much in line with the honor we're trying to provide. We'll display photos of each of our outstanding students and employee award winners as the principals announce their awards. And that's one of my favorite parts is that we also get to hear from the principals who get to celebrate the people from their schools. So I'd like to, at this point first, invite Mr. Alejandro Hernandez, the principal of Dominguez Elementary School, who's here to tell us about his school's honorees. And I know he's here, we saw him, so we give him a round of applause.
Welcome.
Thank you, everybody. I want to thank, I would not, I want to thank the board members and Superintendent Irvin for giving me this opportunity, thank you very much. I would like to ask the parents. We have some parents here and a student here. These are the parents of Anna Isel Blanco, a 6th grader at Dominguez Elementary, and Mr. Martin Ruiz's class. Anna is hardworking and dedicated. In 2015, she was an English language learner. In 2018, she was fluent, resident English speaker, English language proficient by 2018. Anna likes to help people and she would like to become a doctor one day. She's a hardworking student, she's an example to a lot of our 6th graders and her work ethic and her parents, Eva Ruiz Contreras and Hermann Blanco Martinez are very proud of her. Please give them a round of applause, they're right there. Our next outstanding student is Viva Nand, she's a 6th grader in Ms. Sofiro Tejas's class. Her ability to self-advocate, her ability to help others is amazing. She has always worked and goes above and beyond all the things that are asked of her. She is bilingual and belligerent in English and Vietnamese. She excels in English language arts and in mathematics and her strong work ethic makes her a model for others. V is undecided what she wants to become when she goes to college, but she is, her experience as an immigrant in our country and her hardships have, I'm sure she'll be very successful in whatever she decides to do. V's mother, Tran Nan, is very proud of her and we thank her for raising such an amazing young person. Our next honoree is our outstanding parent, is Maritza Herrera. Since we opened in 2014, Ms. Herrera has been there for us, no matter what we ask her to do, she's there. She's been in our PTO, she's been a member of our school site council, she's also been in our ELAC. She is always volunteering in the classrooms and assisting in whatever way she can. She's involved in the education of both her children, Tonat Sin and Diego, and often going between the two schools. We know we can always count on her whenever we need her to help us. She's there for us, Ms. Maritza Herrera, outstanding parent. Our next honoree is our outstanding classified employee, her name is Kenya Nelson. She is an amazing lady. She works very hard, she works in a 6th grade, 5th and 6th grade special day class as an instructional assistant. She is truly an outstanding classified employee. In the classroom, she's dedicated, she works with the students, she takes a lot of ownership and teaches the students how to respect each other. She knows, Ms. Nelson is an educator not only who is trusted by the teacher that she worked with and her students, but also trusted by the community and all the employees at our school. Ms. Kenya Nelson is our outstanding classified employee. 4th grade teacher, Diana Garcia, is our outstanding certified employee. She demonstrates positive passion with her students, taking the time to build relationships with them. She works very hard at creating lessons that are helpful to the students at their level and creates very smart goals for them so that they can, they're attainable and they can reach them. She encourages her students to work hard and she also is emotionally committed and goes beyond the classroom in helping students and parents, especially through these very difficult times that we just passed. She is our standing certified employee. And I wanna thank you guys for this opportunity to celebrate our Dominguez family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez, I would like to say something to you. I'd like to thank you so much for your leadership, it's wonderful. And I love coming to Dominguez before the pandemic and I look forward to coming again. And felicidades a su hija y que sigas adelante, mija. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you again, one more round of applause for Dominguez Elementary School. Thank you so much, great. We'd now like to recognize the honorees from Rodriguez Prep Academy and to do that, we'd like to invite Principal Dr. Randy Clyde to come forward and share his recipients with you.
Alrighty, welcome.
First, I wanna thank the board for inviting me to be here tonight and to introduce the Outstanding Achievement Award winners from Rodriguez Prep Academy. So I know I have a few in the audience here, so when I do recognize you, please stand so we can recognize you here. So first, I wanna recognize 8th grader Nichelle Harris, please stand Nichelle. Who was nominated by her teachers Alfred Gomez and Sarah Klingon Smith for her academics and citizenship. Nichelle has been an outstanding student at Rodriguez for the last three years. She consistently achieved As in all her classes and participated in the Black History Bee, Garden Club, and Film Club. Nichelle loves animals and dreams of being a veterinarian someday. I'm sure her mother, Sepaidup Spite, is very proud. I know I'm proud that Nichelle is a scholar at Rodriguez Prep Academy, so let's give her another round of applause. Our next outstanding student is 8th grader Natalie Ruiz. She was nominated by the teachers in the 8th grade team. Natalie's hard work and focus on excellence has resulted in her achieving As throughout her time at Rodriguez. She wants to attend NYU because she loves traveling and has always wanted to go to New York. She wants to have a career that makes her happy, but that doesn't define her and consume her whole life. Well, also, we also wanna recognize Natalie's parents, Daniel Ruiz and Myra Acevedo for raising such a wonderful daughter. Let's give her a round of applause. Also in the audience is our outstanding parent, Ms. Christina Santana, if you can please stand Christina. Let's give her a round of applause. She is our outstanding parent award winner. She has been a regular fixture at Rodriguez for many years. She's been a member of the school site council and the English Learner Advisory Committee. She has also supported the site with showcases and the parent leadership team. We can always count on Christina's support when it comes to making the school a more positive experience for all students and parents. Thank you, Christina. Next, we wanna celebrate our attendance technician, Ms. Misty Park. Her role is essential in ensuring that every student is attending school every day. She serves as a permanent member of our site's attendance team where she supports the team in generating reports, recording minutes, and contributing ideas to strengthen our attendance program. In her role, Misty has been a major factor in improving average daily attendance and reducing chronic absenteeism, which we know is important to student success. So let's give her a round of applause. Next, teacher Kendra Cruz. She lives to serve her students, all students at Rodriguez. Kendra has a positive disposition when interacting with students, parents, and guardians. As the English Language Arts Department Chair, she collaborates with her colleagues in developing equitable and rigorous learning experiences for students. As the 7th grade lead, she collaborates with her grade level peers in supporting students' social emotional needs and maintaining high expectations. Kendra is a true asset to Rodriguez, so let's give her a round of applause. So those are our Outstanding Achievement Award winners from Rodriguez Prep Academy Middle School. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Clyde, and we do have a question, Dr. Clyde, from Dr. Flores, or comment.
Dr. Clyde, thank you so much for your leadership and you are a true instructional leader. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, and we're just gonna keep the recognition rolling here, so I'd like to invite Principal Jorge Delatorre from San Gregorio High School to come and recognize the representatives from his school who deserve to be honored this evening, so.
Alright, welcome, Mr. Delatorre.
Alright, good evening. I want to thank the board members, Superintendent, Cabinet for inviting me today. I'm proud to be here so I can tell you about some wonderful San Gregorio Spartans. Start off with Adriana Sofia Lopez, we call her Sophie. Wonderful picture there. She's a 9th grader in Jennifer Sayres' moderate severe class. This is Sophie's first year in high school and she's already become an ambassador for citizenship. She demonstrates her pride and passion for San Gregorio High School by assisting her teacher, tutoring her classmates, and volunteering at lunch to help keep the campus clean. Sofia really enjoys her community-based job skill instruction and is looking forward to a career at a popular store like Target or Costco. Her parents, Gerardo and Perla Igualgo Lopez, must be very proud. Congratulations, Sophie. Our next outstanding student is Junior Lawrence Fondren, who is a student in Ms. Melanie Seifert's catering class. Lawrence is a quiet force on campus and promotes citizenship as a proud member of the Black Student Union. He spreads the Spartan spirit throughout our school community by performing as part of the BSU dance team and promoting cultural inclusivity for all students. Lawrence wants to attend UCLA's nursing program and so we also want to honor Lawrence's mother, Plachetti Briggs, for everything she's done to support him. Congratulations, Lawrence. Another awesome picture. Up next, I would like to ask Ms. Lisette Alvarado to stand so we can honor her, thank you for coming. Ms. Alvarado is our outstanding parent award winner. She consistently advocates for her son and other San Gregorio students. She maintains an active role in the education and development of her son, D'Angelo. She volunteers with our baseball program to support the team, including the complex task of running the scoreboard, and we know how hard that is. She communicates effectively with staff and is an active member of our APEC and ELAC parent committees where she provides a valuable input to our school. Thank you so much, Ms. Alvarado, congratulations. I'm also pleased to honor our first classified staff member, which is Christine Stewart. She is our office technician registrar. Christina is consistently pleasant register who efficiently handles all tasks and duties. Her customer service and technical skills have made her a valuable resource at San Gregorio High School. Her particular expertise lies with the ability to provide registration and record support to our parents in person and now very popular, which is online. Christine's outstanding organizational skills and dedication to support our students and staff is what makes her an outstanding employee at our school. Congratulations, Ms. Stewart. And last, but definitely not least, I would like Ms. Nicole Vega to stand. So Program Specialist Nicole Vega is an outstanding Spartan. Nicole has successfully implemented jobs for America's graduates. A nationwide program helping youth who face significant challenges and reach economic and academic success. She effectively and efficiently serves students and families and is very passionate about the work that she does with our students and family. She's really helping our students become leaders and receive every opportunity possible that she can find for them. Nicole demonstrated outstanding professionalism with the high level of customer service she provides to students, families, and our Spartan staff. Congratulations, Ms. Vega. And those are the outstanding achievement award winners from San Gregorio High School. Thank you very much, a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Delatorre.
Thank you, Mr. Delatorre, for your leadership. I had my light on. I wanted to thank you for your leadership and all the awardees, congratulations for all your hard work. It's very difficult during our times and just wanna honor you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, have a good evening.
Thank you. Yes, one more round of applause for San Gregorio.
Sorry, we had one more too, Ms. Savios.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I wanted to go at the end, was this the last of it or do we have more?
No, we have.
Okay, I'll wait.
Arrow View Middle School, I believe, right?
We do, yes. So we're actually going to hear from Principal Berenice Rios. She's gonna be visiting with us remotely this evening to deliver the recognition for her school and we are certainly excited to welcome her to share the great things and the great people of Arrow View Middle School, so.
Am I ready to go?
Yes, you are.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't see, okay. I wanna say thank you to the Board of Education and Cabinet and Superintendent for giving me the opportunity to highlight some of our outstanding members at our school. So I wanna start with our first student and teacher, Ms. Heidi Kirarte, nominated our first student, 7th grader, Marjorie Beltran, for her outstanding student award because of her exceptional citizenship inside and outside of the classroom. Marjorie stands out because of her consistent respect for others, her willingness to help and her persistence to improve every day. She's only been in the US for a few short years, but she works twice as hard to meet the 7th grade standard. So Marjorie wants to attend Loma Linda University and pursue a career in medicine. Her mother, Maria Gomez, has raised a wonderful student. Congratulations, Marjorie, so proud of you. Our next outstanding student is 8th grader, Delmi Guevara Hernandez. She was nominated by her counselor, Ms. Tucker. Delmi is a dual immersion student and a member of the National Junior Honor Society. She has won many awards in math and Avid for her perfect attendance as well. She's also very community-minded, giving her personal time to help her church and our school. Delmi wants to attend Harvard and possibly become a teacher. Her parents, Griselda Hernandez and Juan Barajas, must be proud, congratulations. Then our next award nominee, outstanding parent, is Ms. Albertina Valverde, and I don't know if she's there today. Ms. Albertina Valverde has been a member of our school site council and ELAC for the past few years. She thinks of the entire school population and not just her son and understands she's there to represent all parents. She advocates for students and provides meaningful feedback to help Arrow View improve. We can count on Albertina to be ready and willing to volunteer for any committee that needs a parent input. So thank you, Albertina, for everything that you do and thank you for your involvement in our school. Our next nomination is, or next awardee is our custodian, Mr. Anthony Ramos. Anthony is not just a custodian, he's a positive male role model for our students. Our students know that they can trust him. He builds genuine positive relationships with our students and students know that he cares about them and he will be there to help them for anything that they need. Anthony knows he's part of the team at Arrow View and with one common goal, which is helping our students become successful adults. No job is too big or too small for Anthony, from cleaning our cafeteria to mentoring students to, most recently, he built, he put together a closet for students who need shoes, clothes, jackets, shirts, and so he's bringing a whole lot of smiles to our students, so thank you, Anthony. Students and staff can always count on Anthony to get the job done and always with a smile. Our next staff member is our English teacher, Ms. Sofia Fregoso Peña. She's our final honoree. Her passion to support all students has helped many of our English learners achieve the goal of reclassification. She's not only, she started off as our student intern to resident sub, to teacher, she's now a team leader and also our elf at our school. She builds relationships, advocates for, she builds relationships with students, advocates for their success, and keeps track of their progress. Her work not only impacts students directly but indirectly through the guidance and the support that she provides her team members. Her positive passion for her work is contagious and helps make Arrow View campus a school like that. Thank you, Ms. Sofia Fregoso Peña. Thank you for giving me a chance to honor just some of our staff members and some of our students at Arrow View and members of our Arrow View Dragon family, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rios, for your leadership and it's Dr. Feliz, thank you for your leadership and all of the hard work and all the honorees. I know there's many more that should be honored as well, but thank you again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, Ms. Savios.
Really quickly, I just wanted to say, oh my goodness, it's really nice to start a board meeting like this. So congratulations to everybody, I'm really excited to see the diversity as well on the nominees. You know, we had special education students, special education teachers, custodians, so right on, thank you, thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Ms. Savios, Dr. Daddy Rogers.
I'll say ditto, Ms. Savios, the same thing, it was just such a diversity of everything, but I always wanna just make sure, we take the time to shout out to those parents that made sure that those students were where they were supposed to be and then from there, it takes this entire district family to make it happen, so we appreciate you, all of you. And it was good to see the faces, some of you were my kids' teachers, so just to show you how far this goes back, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Daddy Rogers, and Ms. Ontavetos.
And with that, I think we can close out with one large round of applause for all of the winners from our four schools tonight, so thank you so much for your helping me to recognize them and all of our recipients for your great excellence and your outstanding work, so thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Absolutely. Thank you. All righty, we will be moving on to 2.2. Resolution and recognition of Adult Education Week, and it will be Dr. Doughty Rogers.
Thank you so much, President Wyatt, and I will read the resolution and recognition of Adult Education Week. Whereas adult education in California has a 150-year tradition, beginning with the first recorded adult school sponsored by the San Francisco Board of Education in 1856. And whereas adult education provides educational opportunities and services to equip adults with the knowledge and skills necessary to participate effectively as citizens, workers, parents, and family and community members, and instructional programs ensure that adults have the education and skills required in a competitive economy for a better quality of life. Whereas the district's Inland Career Education Center, formerly the San Bernardino Adult School, has served the community for over 100 years with a core mission to provide a bridge to post-secondary education and the labor market through the delivery of quality education. And whereas the Inland Career Education Center provides educational support with programs such as high school diplomas, GED preparation, English as a second language, as well as business and computer education classes, vocational and career technical education, citizenship preparation, and counseling support. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins the California Department of Education and others throughout California in recognizing March 27th through April 2nd, 2022 as California Adult Education Week.
Vote.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Thank you, Dr. Doughty Rogers. Let's go ahead and vote. All righty, motion carries. We'll move on to 2.3, Resolution and Recognition of School Library Month and National School Librarian Day. We'll move on to Dr. Flores.
Thank you, President Wyatt. It's my honor to do this. Reading is so important and libraries are so important. Our nation believes in education as a civil rights, and reading is definitely a very important component. Whereas School Library Month is recognized annually every April by the American Association of School Librarians. And whereas school libraries provide materials that encourage growth and knowledge, reflect the ideas and beliefs of religions, social, political, historical, and ethnic groups, and their contributions to American and world heritage and culture. And whereas school libraries provide materials to meet individual needs, varied interests, abilities, socioeconomic backgrounds, and maturity levels of the students served. And whereas school libraries are an integral part of the instructional program of schools and provide books to encourage children to read for pleasure and knowledge. And whereas annually, on April 4th, National School Librarian Day recognizes the professionals who are dedicated to creating and maintaining an environment where students feel welcome and have the print and digital resources to learn every day of the year. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District does hereby proclaim April 2022 as School Library Month and April 4th, 2022, as National School Librarian Day, and calls upon school staff and students to participate throughout the month of April in the celebration of School Library Month and our district librarians.
Vote.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. All righty, motion carries. We will move on to 3.0, Public Comments. 3.1, Receive Public Comments. Let me go ahead and read real quick. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. At this time, we are still accepting comments via Zoom, and registration forms are required and available for 24 hours prior to all scheduled Board of Education meetings and close at 4:30 p.m. on the day of the meeting. In-person public comments will be taken first. Participants speaking via Zoom are reminded that any appropriate language or images will forfeit their registration. They will immediately be removed from the meeting. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. And we will start with our first public comment, and it is Ms. Morgan Pelletera. Welcome. Want to turn on your microphone? Push the button right there in front of you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Good evening. Superintendent Irvin, Board President Dr. Wyatt, Vice President Mr. Tillman, Superintendent's Cabinet. My name is Morgan Pelletera, and I'm a national board-certified teacher in our school district. I've been an educator here for 20 years. I've never spoken in front of the board before, but I was moved here tonight to speak in honor of my very good friend and mentor, Bobby Houchens. I know that maybe some of you knew her. Bobby was a teacher in our district for many years. So you'll understand why I was moved to speak about her tonight. Bobby was a high school English teacher in our district. She taught at San Bernardino High School and Arroyo Valley High School for over 20 years. And she passed away on February 16th of pancreatic cancer. Bobby was my teacher, my mentor, my friend. She's everything that I ever wanted to be as a teacher and still, still strive to be. I first met Bobby when I was a brand-new student at the Cal State Teaching Credential Program in 2002. She was my very first teacher and my very first class. And she was just incredible and beautiful and smart and so enthusiastic about her job and her students mostly. I sat in the very front row of her class, and I couldn't ever seem to get, you know, quite close enough to her because I just wanted her to, you know, rub off on me somehow. We became very good friends pretty quickly, and she told me that she was opening a brand-new school in the San Bernardino City School District called Arroyo Valley High School, and I absolutely had to teach there. And so I applied, and I was hired by Mauricio Ariano. And I was placed at Arroyo Valley as an English teacher, much to Karen Craig's chagrin, because she had handpicked every single, every single teacher to open that school. So I was able to win Mrs. Craig over very quickly, thank goodness. But I was, I started my teaching career with, with some very heavy hitters, like Lily Motley and Bruce Sareo, Kenny Soto, Scott K., Sue Lucy, and Bobby Houchens. And so I would spend the next 20 years trying to, you know, to emulate her because I would learn so much from her. Later in her career, Bobby was chosen one of four teachers for the, to be a teaching ambassador fellow for the U.S. Department of Education. So she moved to Washington, D.C. for a year to write, to write policy for English learner, English learner policies. She, that's how committed to what she was doing she was, that she would move across the country for that. Every couple of, every couple of months during that time, I would get a phone call and from like a principal or a professional development leader or, you know, a reporter sometimes, and they would say, "Hey, I hope it's okay that I got your number. Bobby Houchens gave me your number." Because she was always, you know, talking about what we were doing in this district. She was always talking about our demonstration teacher program and, you know, our teaching academy at, you know, Arroyo Valley. So she was always sharing those things that, that we were doing. So I wish I had more time because I have so much to share about her. But I do want to read something that one of her former students wrote on her Facebook page because I think, when I really think about her as, as a teacher and what she did for the students in our district over all these years, I really think that this, this particular Facebook post really, you know, encapsulates that. So Teresa, one of, one of Bobby's former students, wrote, "I never met a teacher I didn't like. I was shy. I lived in a neighborhood where opportunities weren't exactly readily available, and I lived in a household that didn't support the dreams of a young high school girl, but rather added many challenges that made living day-to-day a struggle. School to me was a way to escape the reality of what waited for me when my last class was over. You changed my life. Reading and writing, the passion that you had for it that seeped through your mind and heart and into the young souls that needed to feel and hear the same passion. You loved what you did, and I felt it. We all felt it. This new world filled with opportunities was put in front of me, and you filled me up, and, I'm sorry, and you lifted me up like a kid wanting to see what was on the other side of the wall. The view was fantastic. And I knew from that point on that nothing was going to stop me from moving forward because you had the confidence in me and the rest of your students that if the path to that world wasn't paved, we would pave our own path. Many of us did just that. Like I said, I never met a teacher that I didn't like. But to love a teacher, well, that's completely different. You loved us, and it showed. Thank you, Board, for your time and consideration in listening and, and learning about Bobby Houchens, who shaped more great minds in this school district and community than we will ever know. We are better because she was here. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Pelletera. Thank you for honoring her.
Ms. Pelletier. Thank you for bringing that forward to us. I don't know, Board, if you know her, but she, what she said about Ms. Houchens is just phenomenal. She loved her students, her students loved her. I had the honor of being her master's professor, her master's thesis professor. And she was phenomenal and inspired everyone, inspired not only students, other teachers. And when she became ambassador for, out of the whole nation, to be selected by the State Department of Education, well, actually, the White House, and to be at the level of policy, that's a, you know, teacher, that's from our district, from San Bernardino District. And thank you, Morgan, for coming forward. I mourn her. I loved her. She was inspirational. We worked really well together, and, and she taught my daughter. She taught my daughter how to write, and I just loved her for, for all of that. So thank you so much for bringing it forward.
Thank you for the opportunity to share about her.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next public speaker is Mr. Eddie Garcia. Welcome.
Good evening, Board members. How are you? Most of you know me. I do financial literacy for students here in San Bernardino City Unified School District. But tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of the Making Hope Happen Foundation. I'm actually its president and chairman. And since 1986, we've been working hard for the initiatives for the school district and to help their families and their students. And it's something that I'm very proud to serve on, very happy to do that. In fact, last year, I wanted to let the board know that we gave over, excuse me, almost $300,000 in scholarships to graduating San Bernardino City Unified School District seniors. Very proud of that. I also wanted to let the board know of other ways we make money for the school district. Last fall, we actually wrote three grants on behalf of the school district that totaled $119,500. And out of those three grants, all three were approved, and those funds went directly to the school district to help out in its initiatives. Very proud of that. And one of those initiatives actually is going to the Early Childhood Education Department to go teach preschool kids, have home visits for preschool children. That's going to be done through the Making Hope Happen Foundation's KITS program, the Karnic Infant and Toddler Success Program. And that actually is item Agenda 10.27 on your docket tonight. So I'm hoping for an approval so we can do that wonderful and very important work. And that's all I wanted to tell you. I want to say thank you so much. It's a pleasure seeing all of you. As I sat down, I told the person next to me, "I know a lot of these people." So it's great to see you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Good to see you. All righty, our next public comment and speaker will be Andrea Schindler. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the Board and the Cabinet. I'm Andrea Schindler, and parent of the San Bernardino School Unified School District. Six months, that's how long we've been at this. We've been coming week after week, giving you updated data and information, and still it feels like we're not being heard. I attended last week's town hall on the COVID vaccine. And I want to say that I appreciated you, Dr. Rodriguez, for vocalizing that there's a lot of us that feel like the information that continues to be presented one-sided. I find it pretty ironic that this comment was made during a town hall that was so totally and completely one-sided. After all the many times that we've come here to speak, after all the emails and information that has been supplied and provided to you from the CDC and the World Health Organization themselves, we're still hosting a town hall with a medical professional who claims that the only side effects that she's seen is headaches, fatigue, and pain at the injection site. Oh, and a friend that, whose daughter had a myocardial reaction, but that's since rectified itself. Now, this may be her truth, but this can't be the only truth in the medical profession. As you've been informed, under court order, Pfizer has just recently released 55,000 pages of COVID vaccine review documents. In these pages, there is documented 42,086 case reports of adverse events. Also, 1,223 documented fatal events during the three-month period of December 1st, 2020 to February 28th, 2021. Additionally, there's eight pages of adverse reactions that Pfizer is advising doctors and nurses to look out for. So you can't tell me that there's not doctors and nurses that are not available to speak on the adverse events that they are seeing in their practice. I cannot begin to emphasize enough that it's essential that we have well-informed, data-driven conversations with doctors and scientists that are using honesty and integrity when delivering information. These should be individuals who are delivering peer-reviewed, data-driven information, not propaganda supplied by agenda-driven politicians. I'm calling upon this board for the sake of fully informing and adequately educating our community that you must cease only providing one-sided material and that you must begin the process of delivering balanced information and discussion from professionals with the highest integrity. I keep hearing this board speak over and over again that we need to consider the feelings of those who've lost loved ones from COVID-19. I would also like you to please consider those feelings of grief for those who not only lost their loved ones to COVID-19, but who also love, have lost loved ones who survived COVID-19 but who died from an adverse reaction or for whom are living their lives upended from a vaccine injury. I'm also asking once again that you please consider amending the resolution that you passed in January to better protect our scholars and their families. We sent many examples over to you, but here's an exceptional resolution that the San Bernardino Board, County Board of Supervisors is currently in the process of revising. Whereas in fall of 2021, Gavin Newsom directed the California Department of Public Health to follow procedures established by the California state legislator to add the COVID-19 vaccine to other vaccinations such as measles, mumps, and rubella required for in-person public school attendance in the state pursuant to the California Health and Safety Code. Whereas, under California law, students are allowed to forego vaccines required for in-person attendance at K-12 schools if a doctor says it's medically necessary to do so. However, since current law only applies to the previously approved immunizations, the state must offer broad personal belief exemptions for all newly mandated vaccines unless lawmakers and Governor Newsom override that requirement by enacting new legislation. Whereas on January 24th, 2022, Senate Bill SB 871 was introduced, which, if signed into law, would mandate all students attending California public schools to receive the COVID-19 vaccination and eliminate that personal exemption, personal belief exemption. Whereas SB 871 also removes the personal belief exemption from any future additional immunization requirements that are deemed necessary from the California Department of Public Health. the California Department Public of Health. Whereas, personal belief exemptions have been a time-honored tradition under American law, most notably for conscientious objectors whose personal beliefs have been respected and tolerated under rights enshrined under the First Amendment to the Constitution. Whereas, Governor Newsom has begun to lift emergency orders and other COVID-19 state mandates, including lifting the workplace indoor mask mandate as of March 1st and lifting indoor mandates as of March 11th in schools. Now, therefore, the Board of Supervisors of San Bernardino County opposed SB 871 and similar legislation regulatory efforts and state mandates which would require mandatory COVID-19 vaccinations without exemptions for personal beliefs. This includes vaccination mandates as a requirement for, for employment or enrollment in educational institutions, both public and private. So I really hope that you guys will consider, like we said, having a more balanced approach to giving information and conversations and amending that resolution that we passed in January. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schindler.
Dr. Wyatt, I just want to ask Ms. Schindler a quick question.
Ms. Schindler, question, please.
Would you just, I just wanted to, hi, Ms. Schindler, how are you? I'm over here, over here.
Oh, hi. Sorry, Wyatt. Sorry. Oh, Dr. Rogers, sorry.
No worries, no worries. That resolution that you just read, was that something that the county just released, or where?
They actually, as far as my understanding is concerned, it's something that they're working on right now. It's the first that they're putting, they've put together that they're working on revising, and they had a meeting today to talk about the revisions that they're making to it.
Okay, and Dr. Wyatt, I'm sure we have something that we can keep our eye on as well, to see.
Absolutely. We can take a look at it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, our next public comment and speaker is Ms. Negretti. Welcome.
Good evening, Board.
Evening.
I'm, I'm, I'm asking for balance, and it's almost like, I hate to repeat the same thing, but I'm just asking for balance, and that's one of the points that we heard in the town hall, balance. So I'm asking that, in the same manner that you invited to have a doctor who favors, because it was someone who just favored the vaccine, that you invite someone who is knowledgeable and can speak about the reactions, which I did share with a gentleman who was here on that day, and that you also invite a pastor. So if we can have that balance, that would be great. If you put, please agendize that for the next one. Also, we had Mrs. Densen, who spoke at the last board meeting, and asked for a resolution for SB 866 and 871. It's great to hear you that you're going to keep an eye on it for what the county is doing. However, whatever the county is doing, it should be your lead and not just waiting on someone else to do it. An additional thing that I would like you to look into, on October 5th of 2021, at approximately 1:30 and 45 seconds, it appears that school board member Abigail Medina was disclosing closed session. And at the time, we had Dr. Rogers, who was our board president, and it appeared that she was trying to stop her from further disclosing anything else. I ask that you do, this is a formal request, that you initiate, initiate an investigation, whether or not she stated anything that was said during closed session, that you file a formal complaint, and that you have everything pursued to the full legal actions that need to be taken. On the agenda for today, you also have an increase for what it looks like it's the church, which you remember Robert Porter had said, "This is one of the buildings that we have here that is a historical building. I would love to keep it." Right across from this side, you have an empty field. So they already increased the, for BB&amp;K, to 790,000. Today, you stand to increase to 700, 250,000. That puts this law firm at over $1 million. Why not just buy an empty field, like the field that's across the street, and leave the church alone, and leave the congregation alone, instead of, you know, continuing to fight this? I would ask that you make better decisions and better choices with the public funds that you are here overseeing. And lastly, I would like to formally request that you agendize the removal and replacement of the black asphalt at schools such as Rodriguez and Golden Valley, and I'm sure there are others that have it. It is slippery, and it is dangerous for the kids. I know that I put in a request for the injuries. I shared with you what happened with my daughter, and after sharing that, I received pictures from another child who ended up stepping on the grass, and after stepping on the grass, because it was wet, she slipped on the asphalt, and those were some pretty nasty marks that she had. So instead of being cheap with those funds and wasting it on attorneys, could you please spend that on our schools? Thank you.
Ms. Negretti, a couple of questions, please. The date on the particular board meeting, you said it was, excuse me, in October?
October 5th, 2021. If you go to approximately 1:30 and 45 seconds, that's when the discussion begins. My understanding is that disclosing closed session does have a penalty.
And then the two schools was?
For sure, I know factually that Rodriguez has the black asphalt, Golden Valley ended up increasing. They had a step similar to something that looks like what you have here. There was a step here. During a summer, what they did was they came and they just added an increased amount of black asphalt, so the step would no longer be there. You know, black asphalt, it's slippery when wet, and it's the cheapest thing that you could have put. And when our school district spent thousands of dollars on doing a beautification of this, which was one of the newest buildings in the district, it was unnecessary. Why not start with our, you know, with our schools?
Rodriguez and Golden Valley.
For sure, that's two.
Okay.
But please look into the rest of them.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, Ms.
Is it possible for me to answer, Dr. Rogers, really quick? Sorry, I was just given information that that passed this morning. I just wanted to answer her question. Sorry.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Cunningham?
Okay, we have one virtual comment, and it's from Manuel Salgado. If you're available, please unmute.
Hello, so.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Arroyo, my name is Manuel Salgado, and I am a senior from Arroyo Valley High School, and I am also the senior class president, and also a SLAC member, which stands for Student Leadership Advisory Council. I am here to talk about a recent, we've been recently notified that seniors at our school, and I'm pretty sure at other schools, that we are not allowed to decorate our caps for graduation. The current policy for, like, regarding how we present ourselves, is Ed. Code 51227, and it quotes saying, "In order to participate in graduation ceremonies, each graduating senior and his/her parent or guardian must sign a contract agreeing to abide by this specific code of dress and behavior for the ceremony." And in our senior contract, which many seniors signed, it says, "Caps may be embellished with school-appropriate decorations that do not extend more than two inches from the cap." But recently, we have been notified that we cannot do that. So as of, I have a question as to why can't we do that? Is there a specific reason, and can I change your mind? I also created a criteria as to, basically, the criteria of how seniors can decorate their cap. Obviously, I put "no profanity" and obscene, offensive, or inappropriate language slash imagery. That one's like, had to go there. And I want to start off by saying our why as to doing this, why we want this. I, we wrote, "We want to make the most of our graduation because you only get to experience this moment once. We want to be able to show our identity, individuality, and honor ourselves and others because expression is so important in the development of the school culture." And I've also surveyed some students about this issue, and the first question I asked them was, "Do you think your cap will be distracting?" And Sarah Lucatero says, "A decorated cap would be about distracting as everyday individuality and freedom of expression seen in class through students' clothes, bags, and shoes, et cetera. For a group whose ages range from 17 to 19, we should all be able to handle it for a few short hours. Most attendants have already signed the senior contract agreeing and acknowledging, acknowledging that we will be asked to leave if we stir up a fuss. The cap shall fall, should fall under that category. Precautions have already been taken to a halt, any, for, to halt any kind, kind of ruckus." And another question I asked, "What would you have on your cap?" Genesis Rodriguez says, "The Mexican flag." Diana Ocampo says, "Heritage." Another question I was, "Why do you want to decorate your cap? Why is it important to you?" Adrian said, "Senior year comes once in a lifetime, and I want to get the full senior experience before I'm out here." Rosemary Ibarra says, "It's important because while I am in the crowd of 4, 500 graduates, I would want my parents to recognize me from the audience, and because the way I plan to decorate, it will represent who I am and what I have done to get here." And I want to close this off by saying the overall impact. This opportunity will have a huge positive impact on not only the students, but also the parents. Parents would be able to see their child in the crowd and be filled with pride to see them graduating. Decorating the caps for graduation will welcome in new traditions to the school. This would lead to benefiting the school culture as a whole, and you'll be here, and you'll hear the students talk about this tradition in a good way. And that is all that I have written down.
All righty, ma'am. Well, thank you. We have some questions for you, okay?
Yeah, for sure.
We'll start with Vice President, Mr. Tillman.
Yes, and it's not so much a question, but I don't know that it's the case that the policy says you can't decorate your caps. I would ask that the Board look into it and agendize it. I happen to like decorated caps. Thank you.
All righty, thank you, Ms. Tillman. Dr. Flores?
Neil, just to clarify, you're asking us to amend the policy to allow you to decorate your caps?
Yes, and also as to why.
Okay, so, and you've taken a poll and everything and so forth.
Yeah.
I agree with Mr. Tillman that we should agendize it and reconsider the policy. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Anyone else? All right, it's definitely a topic worth discussing. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you so much.
All right, Ms. Cunningham, is that it for comments?
That is it.
All right, thank you very much. We'll be moving on to 4.0, closed session, and then we have 4.1, closed session, public comments.
There are no public comments.
All right, there are no public comments. We'll be moving to 4.2, adjourned to closed session with the closed session agenda. I agree. All righty, folks, we'll go ahead and come back. 5.0 action reported from closed session. We'll move on to 5.1. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts a recommendation and findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's finding of facts and recommendations and orders the expulsion of the following students with the identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code 48900.
So moved.
All right, it's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.2. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves of following students were recommended for expulsion, but expulsion is deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence, and/or the availability of other means of correction and compliance with the Education Code Section 48900. Therefore, although they were recommended for expulsion, the expulsion is not granted.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Okay, motion carries, 5.3. Students recommended for suspension or expulsion excluding mandatory offenses but remanded to youth court for other means of corrections. The Board of Education accepts and adopts a recommendation and findings of fact of positive youth development and orders suspension or expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Dr. Rogers and seconded by Dr. Flores. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.4, lift of expulsion of students. Excuse me. Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the readmission of the following students with identification numbers as indicated below. Two schools of the San Bernardino City Unified School District in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.5, other closed session action. There is no other closed session action, so we will move on to 6.1, public hearing. We'll go ahead and close our board meeting. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing of 6.1. Initial contract proposal, reopener, Article 11, wages and articles, Article 7, unit members' rights from Communications Workers of America.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Board, Superintendent Irvin, and staff. I'm Teresa Hunter with CWA 9588, representing the guest teachers of San Bernardino City Unified School District. We're here to begin the process to present our initial contract proposal. This is part of a successor agreement that we have, and we're just here this evening just to present part of our process. I'd like to also add that we really enjoy a very collaborative relationship with HR here at San Bernardino City Unified School District, and so I'd like to make that, make that known, and, and we work well with this HR, not something that happens a lot of other places. Thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Oops, excuse me.
I just, you may not notice, but Ms. Hunter plays a lean piccolo and flute.
Oh.
I have to see that sometime.
Oh, my goodness. That wasn't supposed to come out.
And she's humble as well, let's say that. All righty, is there other, any other public comments?
That was all.
All righty. So be it resolved that the Board of Education received the initial contract proposal, reopener, Article 6, wages and Article 7, unit members' rights from the Communication Workers of America, CWA.
So moved.
I didn't know if I was supposed to close after, or when we're done, or right now?
After the comments.
Oh, after comments and then vote? Oh, okay. All right, well, let me close it then, and then we'll vote. All right. I believe it was moved. Was it properly second?
Yes.
Okay, it was moved by?
Mr. Tillman, I moved it. Mr. Tillman seconded it.
Thank you very much. All righty, well, this, I was gonna say discussion, but I don't think we, I think we already had that, so let's go ahead and vote. All righty, motion carries. We'll go ahead and open up the regular school board meeting agenda, and we are on 7.0, reports by union organizations, 7.1, San Bernardino Teachers Association.
Good evening, Dr. Wyatt. Can you hear me?
Good evening. Yes, we can. Welcome.
Good evening, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, Superintendent Irvin, members of the Board and Cabinet. I'm Ash Lebedis Alcala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association, and I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of our 3,000 members. As we enter this final quarter of the school year with spring break upon us, I think it's important for us to take a moment to reflect and remember where we were two years ago on this same day. Little did we know at that time that a worldwide pandemic would change education as we knew it in a short time. Our educators quickly shifted to distance learning overnight, and what we and what we thought would be a couple of weeks turned into over a year before we returned to our classrooms for in-person instruction. Remarkably, we've been able to continue in in-person learning all year, and things seem to be calming down for the moment. But I think it's important to not forget that sometimes the people that we see every day may be struggling and we aren't even aware. I've mentioned before that according to a recent NEA survey, ninety-one percent of educators surveyed stated that pandemic-related stress is a serious problem for educators. And ninety percent of members say that feeling burnt, burnt out is a serious problem, with another sixty-seven percent saying that it's very serious. And just yesterday, we heard the tragic news that an administrator in a nearby district died by suicide. As we make these decisions moving forward, we must keep in mind the stress that we are still under and continue to give each other grace, especially as we are approaching our most stressful and busiest time of the school year with the state testing window and all of the other end-of-the-year tasks and events that take place in a very short period of time after spring break. I also wanted to let you know that although we appreciate that a survey on the proposed start times due to SB three twenty-eight or the Portantino Rule have been sent out by the district, our members still have many questions and serious concerns about the times that have been proposed. Our negotiations team has begun to meet with the district, thank you, Dr. Funchess. But I want the Board to be aware that this change has a lot of implications and unintended consequences, not only for our students and their families, but also our employees and their families. And these are not decisions that should be made in haste, and feedback from all stakeholders needs to be seriously considered as we move forward to implement this one-size-fits-all legislation. I also want to say thank you this evening to Ms. Pelleterra for her words about Ms. Bobby Houchens. She was a beloved educator in our district for many years, and she mentored many of our members. A great educator, Sir Ken Robinson once said, "Teaching is a creative profession, not a delivery system." Great teachers mentor, stimulate, provoke, and engage. Bobby Houchens was one of those teachers, and tonight we also honor her memory. She will be greatly missed. And lastly, this evening, I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to Mr. Irvin and Dr. Menares for the meeting yesterday. We look forward to having more productive meetings with you all in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All righty, my apologies, seven point two, California School Employee Association.
Good evening, President Wyatt.
Good evening.
Hi, this is Veronica, First Vice President for Chapter one eighty-three. How are you guys?
Doing great. How about yourself?
So far, so good.
Okay.
Just wanted to give you guys a couple of updates as far as what's going on over in our neck of the woods. So first, we had our informational meeting for our members to go over the MOU regarding COVID pay. Our members will be voting on that in the upcoming days. And we also wanted to take this moment to say thank you to the Board for ensuring that our members don't have to use their sick time to quarantine, whether it's for recovering or having to care someone who's recovering from COVID, as well as also not having to use their time to quarantine due to close contact circumstances. Secondly, we had an informational meeting last week to review the MOU regarding some changes to job duties for a handful of job classifications that our members are currently voting on. I believe the window is closing very soon on that as well. Thirdly, we wanted to take the time to say thank you again for approving the wage increases. Some of our members have actually already received their retro pay and the four percent increase. We would also like to give a huge shout out to payroll for all of their hard work with crunching all those numbers in such a short amount of time to make sure that our members and all the district employees were able to enjoy some extra money during these difficult times. And lastly, of course, we always continue to work with the district to solve problems that arise and to negotiate on topics that we feel need to be addressed. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you. All righty, seven point three, Communication Workers of America. All right, we, all you heard from me, so very good. Thank you very much. Seven point four, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association. All right, no report, moving right along. Eight point O, reports and presentations. Eight point one, second period interim financial report as of January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Mr. Solins?
To Board President, Dr. Wyatt, Vice President, Mr. Tillman, Board members, Superintendent Irvin and Cabinet and Audience members. This evening, we will provide, be providing the Board with an overview of the second interim budget as well as an LCAP update as we move closer towards preparing our budget for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three year, as well as our LCAP update. I will start off with a couple items. We'll briefly review the state financial outlook as well as updated assumptions that come from the Governor's January Budget Proposal. We will review the multi-year projections that those assumptions generate and as well as our local decisions that impact our budget. We also provide the Board with a recommendation for a positive budget certification as supported by the financial statements attached to the agenda. And finally, we will review the LCAP development process and timelines for LCAP and budget activities over the next several months. So here's a look at the budget cycle that we go through annually that aligns and supports the goals, actions, and priorities of the LCAP plan as set forth by our educational partner input, as well as the input from our Board in terms of priorities and the development and work of staff. So as shared earlier in February, we provided information on the state economic outlook. As we move forward and closer to the Governor's May budget revise, the state revenues continue to outpace projections, which bodes well as we move into the May revise and what will come with the updated budget proposal from the Governor. The projected general fund surplus of forty-five, four, five, forty-five point seven billion dollars for two thousand twenty-three, we anticipate that this is going to grow as the Governor has set middle of the road revenue projections that are not in line with what the Legislative Analyst Office. So we anticipate that there'll be future budget growth as we move closer to the May revise. But as always, we always have to take a cautious look. We are still in the midst of the COVID pandemic. We, we are seeing record inflation that we have not seen since the nineteen eighties. And we have the emerging, emerging threat coming out of the war in the Ukraine that threatens the economy on a national level, but also at a state and local level. So this chart highlights the difference between the Governor's January Budget Proposal and the budget forecast provided by the Legislative Analyst Office. We can see by the orange bar, which is the Governor's Budget Proposal, the projected growth for Proposition ninety-eight Minimum Funding Guarantee for Education is below that of the Legislative Analyst Office. This is primarily due to the Governor taking a modest approach to projecting revenues. And as mentioned earlier, there is an expectation with the increasing revenue surpluses that the May revision will have favorable news to, for school districts and education, including the, the potential increase in the cost of living to approximately six, six percent. So this chart, this table shows the changes from the first interim for the unrestricted general fund budget. Before I begin, I would like to point out the color coding in the third column on the right side for the Board's information. If there is a reflection of red, that is a, a negative effect on the budget, meaning a loss of revenues or an increase in expenditures. If the numbers are in blue, that means it's a positive impact to the budget. Could, meaning increased revenues, or it could be a reduction of expenditures that would positively affect the ending fund balance. So as we look through, we saw on the revenue side, a decrease in LCFF revenue, and that is related to a downward projection related to our P one budget, our P one attendance report that was filed in January, a slight downgrade that resulted in a decrease of three hundred and forty-one thousand. On the expenditure side, we see salary and benefit savings as we continue to be in the grips of a labor shortage, and we continue to have some vacancies that exist. We have that, we have that four million dollar savings on the expenditure side. For Bixson Supplies as well as Services, we continue to experiencing challenges with supply chain issues that limit our ability to make all the expenditures as outlined in the budget. So as we move forward, we, we are about a month away from the purchase order cutoff of April fifteenth. So sites, departments continue to work to expend those funds, and that may have a change as we move into our estimated actuals. On the restricted program side, we received some positive news as we saw an increase in our AB six oh two special education funding, both in the current year and in the proposed budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. The result of that is a reduction of our local contribution from the unrestricted side to the restricted side to cover the cost of special education program due to the inadequate funding from state and federal sources. The result of that, you can see in the green circle, is that our ending fund balance for the unrestricted side climbed fourteen point two million dollars to thirty-nine point one million. So that's an additional thirty-nine point one million added to the ending fund balance, which we'll go over in subsequent slides. So this is just a reminder to the Board and the public that our budget is, projections are based on the assumptions known as of today, as well as the local decisions that we as a district made. Our budget and the projections can and will, will change anytime our underlying assumptions change. So as I mentioned earlier with the Governor's January Budget Proposal, as well as some local information, we've updated assumptions to reflect information that we are able to incorporate into our budget as of now. There are elements of what the Governor has proposed in his budget proposal for twenty-two, twenty-three that are still unknown and cannot be quantified and implemented into our budget. We receive guidance from the County Office of Education in terms of what assumptions from the Governor's proposal we can incorporate and what are assumptions that we are not able to incorporate. So we can see here that on the COLA table, our COLA for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year increased to five point three three percent, which is an increase from two point seven eight percent previously. And moving into twenty-three, twenty-four, there was a half a percent increase, raising it from three point one, one percent to three point six one percent. All when factored in with our attendance and the ADA flexibility provided by the Governor's proposal, allowing for soft landing will provide increased revenues to the LCFF formula for the coming years. As I mentioned earlier, we had updated AB six oh two base rate funding for special education programs, which allowed us to reduce the local contributions that we make from our unrestricted to our restricted programs. And then working with our Health and Welfare Committee, we realized a reduction in our health and welfare costs for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three year, going from what we anticipated was a maximum cap of seven percent down to two point five percent. So that results in a one-time savings to the district. And then subsequently, in the following year, we saw a one percent decrease from seven percent to six percent, which will also yield a, a, a smaller one-time savings. We've also incorporated at the Board's direction as we implement and will move forward to implementing SB three twenty-eight, the additional cost for transportation to accommodate the change in schedule. So that twelve million dollars that was projected is included in the multi-year projections beginning in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. As well as the salary settlements that the district and our bargaining teams agreed to, those have also been reflected in this, our updated assumptions. And then it's also a reminder that this, our multi-year projections continue to maintain the ESR budget offsets over the next three-year periods totaling sixty-nine point eight million dollars.
All right, excuse us, Mr. Sol, we do have at least one question right there, if you don't mind.
Yes, on slide nine, the one that you just were on, yeah. The six percent for twenty twenty-four, is that a projection?
That is currently based on our negotiations with our healthcare providers. That is the cap that they provided. Now, so to answer your question?
Have they negotiated yet?
So, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Have they negotiated yet?
So they've only negotiated for twenty-two, twenty-three. The six percent was part of the negotiations this year. However, as we move into negotiations for health and welfare benefits, that could, that could decrease, but it could go no higher than that six percent.
So it could decrease?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
And then the COLA for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, that's a, a projection, right? That's not set in stone?
That's, that is correct. And, and I would say that the twenty-two, twenty-three COLA, the five point three three, that is also a projection based on the Governor's Budget Proposal, but what we are hearing is that they could provide a higher COLA.
That's based on the May revise?
Correct.
Okay, and so, and we wouldn't know the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four until when?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, we would know in, in the twenty-two, twenty-three when the Governor does a May revise in twenty-two, twenty-three for the following year.
Okay, so, so that's to be determined?
That is correct.
Okay, and so is the health and welfare increases?
Correct.
Or decreases, okay.
Correct, and these are, these are just the assumptions based on the information we know now. They will, they will change, and we expect that they will change.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Just for me, real quick on the updated assumptions, I think that's where we're still at. The twelve million dollar cost for transportation, is that for sped only, or would that be for all?
Right now, that's, that's for special education only, and, and that also is a number that can, as we, as we go out for our transportation bids, which we are currently out to bid for transportation, then, an additional transportation vendor, that can change. It could go higher, but it could go lower based on competition.
Then were we pursuing, looking at a waiver for SB three twenty-eight for next year?
So we have had conversations with regards to that. Dr. Funchess is taking the lead, but yes, we, we have, we are looking into that possibility.
Thank you.
Clarification, did you say a waiver? I kept here.
Waiver, with a W, as in Wyatt.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'll, and I'll, I'll clarify, a waiver is probably not the, the correct phrase. We, we potentially have flexibility with our current CBA contract. That would allow us a one-year extension until that CBA expires.
All right, I think I opened up a little can here, sorry, but, Dr. Flores?
So, Mr. Solins, could you please clarify, we don't have to get, quote, a waiver? This Board can decide?
That, that's, I, I won't, still, Dr. Funchess is under, but I would say yes, but?
What we plan to do on April fifth is to bring that information to Board. According to the requirement, if the CBA expires after the implementation that was set by Governor Newsom, which is July one, two thousand twenty-two, we can implement SB three twenty-eight at the expiration date of our CBA. So we, in essence, could have until two thousand twenty-three based on the law.
What does CBA stand for?
Collective Bargaining Agreement, sir.
Okay, so we could make the decision, we don't have to apply for a waiver?
Correct, that would be in your hands, but we bring you that information.
That's very good to know, because I would not want to make any decision based on haste and not getting input from everybody, yeah. Thank you.
My apologies, I guess that was a little premature with that, and, no, Dr. Funchess, it's nice to?
I'm glad that you did, Dr. Wyatt. Yeah, that's really important information.
I'm even happy to hear that Mr. Tillman doesn't know what CBA means after twenty-eight years on the Board, but thank you, Dr. Funchess. We'll bring you that information.
So I, I would just add to that, that point is that while we could extend it or potentially extend it a year based on Board direction, that when we look at our multi-year projections, we do and have it reflected in twenty-three, twenty-four, because that would be the date that we would have to implement. Okay, so now we covered our updated assumptions, and so these are the multi-year projections that those assumptions help generate. So for the unrestricted side, we're going to focus on two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. So when we look at our total revenues versus expenditures, we see that we have an increase in revenues over our expenditures, leading to an increase in revenues over our expenditures, leading to an increase in our ending fund balance of 39.1, which is what I spoke, spoke about earlier. So when we combine that with the beginning fund balance of $80.4 million, our ending fund balance is projected to be just under $120 million for the unrestricted side. Of that $120 million, 2% reserved for economic uncertainties of $17.7 million, in addition to the assigned LCAP carryover that we're required to assign for unspent LCAP actions so that they can be reincorporated into the LCAP plan for the subsequent year. And that's totaling $21.1 million with the rest being reserved for deficit spending. So if we look into 202223 and 202324, we can see on line number three, we see mild or slight deficit spending that will slightly reduce our ending fund balance. However, if we look at line five, we can see positive fund balances, ending fund balances across all years, which would allow us to provide our 2% for economic uncertainties and have additional for future deficit spending and other assignments. So if we look at our combined multi-year projection, which is our unrestricted and restricted side, similarly, if we focus on 2122, we have revenues in excess of our expenditures, increasing our fund balance by 82.6 million. Again, these are restricted balances, so they will be assigned for restricted purposes, leaving us with an ending combined general fund balance of 219.4 million. Again, 99.9 million, which is for our restricted ending balances. And for those uses, our 2% for economic uncertainties, our LCAP assignment, and then our reserve for economic uncertainties. Similarly, if you look over the, I'm sorry, on number five, our ending fund balance across the years, we maintain a positive fund balance, allowing us to meet our financial obligations over the next three years. As a result of the information that I just shared with you, it allows the district to self-certify with a positive certification that attests that we are able to meet our financial obligations for the current and two subsequent fiscal years. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Ms. Kimber Sargent, who will walk us through the LCAP process, but I see we have a question before we proceed.
Thanks, so before, Dr. Flores, are you done? Okay, I just wanted to make sure before.
Yeah, I have one more.
Oh, after his, after Ms. Solins? Because before we get to the next part.
I just want to ask a question. When can I ask questions about the report that you sent us? After the presentation?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, afterwards, okay, okay.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. All righty, welcome.
Okay, good evening.
Now, is it Ms. Sergeant or Dr. Sergeant? We've had a lot of doctors lately, I just want to make sure.
Someday, Dr. Sergeant.
All right, I'm looking forward to that day.
Miss Sergeant.
We're putting you on the spot for that, so, okay, just kidding.
Thank you. President, President Dr. Wyatt, Vice President Mr. Tillman, Mr. Irvin, I know he's not here, Board and Cabinet, thank you for the opportunity tonight to go over the process that we go through for the LCAP annual update. I know I was recently here to share with you about the supplemental process. The process I'll describe tonight really goes through our end-of-the-year process. Throughout the year, we do monitor our LCAP. And this cycle will be our end-of-the-year. There are three components to it, which include the strategic planning and the engagement of our educational partners. That process of doing that, not only at this time, but mid-year as well, looking at our data and expenditures, helps to assure our accountability and compliance. In doing so, we want to make sure that the actions and services that we have in our LCAP, we are looking at our metrics and giving you an end-of-the-year update. I know you did receive a mid-year update, but you'll receive an end-of-the-year update as well to ensure that those actions and services are supporting, principally supporting our student groups that are found in our LCAP, which are low-income, foster youth, and English learners. This, this graphic may look similar to you. We have showed this graphic before as our process. It happens at the district level as well as at the site level. If you look at the inner circle, that is our, our site-level process that is led by our site leaders, our principals, vice principals, and their staff, where they gather input, look at their metrics, and they evaluate their programs and services related to LCAP. They share that information in between the inner circle and the outer circle so that we're ensuring that we get the input from our school sites. The outer circle is where you will see the process that happens at the district level, where we have engagement of not only our educational partners, our directors that are involved with LCAP, our site leaders, our district parent advisory committees, which you have listed there, as well as the cabinet and union participation as well. Information is shared between the inner and outer circle, not only at the principal level, but also at the parent level, with parents representing Site Council, ELAC at our DAC and DILAC, and they share that information back and forth and reports to the sites. We, oops, sorry. The process that you see there with the dates of January, February, and March are the process that led us up to the LCAP supplement. On the next slide, you'll see the process that will lead us up to our annual update. For that process, Mrs. Applegate from Educational Services will be sharing that process with you for our annual update.
Thank you, Ms. Sergeant, and good evening, Board. I just wanted to remind you how we are very diligent about involving all of our stakeholders into the LCAP process, and we've already had several meetings since January. As you can see, here's our calendar of meetings that are up and coming. It's our parent councils, as Ms. Sergeant mentioned, it's also community meetings, other educational partners. But Board, I want to highlight in red so that you can see that we will have board workshops to go over the board priorities. So we know, and as you heard Mr. Solins say, there are some funds that possibly will roll over, and so we want to make sure that we get your input as to what your priorities are as a board. So you'll have two different opportunities, on April 20th and also on May 17th. And we will continue on with the process until you have the, the end-of-the-year update. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Applegate and Ms. Sergeant. So lastly, the slide just again shows the budget and LCAP next steps as we move closer to June, which is our period for the board to adopt our LCAP and budget for the 202223 year. I would, I would like to take this time to add to Mrs. Applegate's feedback with regards to board input. So as we not only look at the LCAP, we also look at the additional one-time funding that we've received for COVID-related needs. And so as we, as we wind towards the end of the year and we identify what funds have been expended and what's have not, then we will also be coming back to the board to identify available resources so that the board can set priorities for the available funding so that we can plan and we can execute those expenditures and fulfill those priorities before the, the expenditure deadlines. And with that, that is all the information that we have, and I know we have some questions, so.
Thank you, Mr. Solins, and to your team as well for the presentation, Dr. Flores.
Yeah, thank you all, the whole team, for preparation. It's really important, you guys always do a great job. In the report that we got, I was reading it, and I just wanted to clarify on page four of the financial report, interim report?
The one that they sent us.
The one that they sent us, it's not on here, but can you bring it up? I don't know, do you have it?
I don't.
You don't have it on your-
I don't have it in, I can probably bring up-
Well, I, I just wanted to clarify, on the CARES Act ESAR II, the amount, I'm assuming this is what's left over, right? $102 million?
No, that, that's the actual original award amount.
That's the award amount?
So there have been expenditures to date. I think the, at a prior board presentation, there, we had between actual expenditures and encumbrances for those dollars, approximately a little over 70 million, but I can get that exact number for the board.
So we only have 7 million encumbered?
No, I, I'm sorry, 70 million.
Oh, 70, okay.
Was either spent or encumbered.
Or encumbered, okay. And it'll have to be spend by, spent by 93023?
That's correct.
Then ESAR III, the total amount, I thought it was more than 183. I think it was 233.
No, you're, you're, so the, if you look at the two amounts, so it's separated in two amounts, there's ESAR III, the 183.9-
Oh, and then the other one, okay.
And then the 45.9.
So that comes up to about two, yeah, 33, 23, okay, 233. And then how much have we spent of the expanded learning opportunities?
So the expanded learning opportunities is 42 million combined. I'd have to get the exact dollar amount for the board, but I know we've made significant investments and, and similar to what I shared with the ESAR II activity and encumbrances, a significant portion has either been committed, encumbered, or expended, but I can get the board the exact number.
I would really like to know how much we have spent because it's dedicated to 3,841.99, just dedicated to paraprofessional services.
Correct.
And I do know that our teachers and our children benefit by having paraprofessionals. And I know it's been difficult to hire them and so forth, but just wondering, and we have two more years to spend it, so I hope that we can come up to speed to, to hire, you know, paraprofessionals, especially moving into the literacy campaign that we're embarking on. Anyway, I, I would like to know that. And then the expanded learning opportunities program, that's earmarked, right, for, what does that mean, two years from award?
So, so this is, this is actually an interesting funding, funding. So this is funding that is intended to expand the before and after-school learning programs. When combined with the instructional day, will provide a nine-hour day of learning and enrichment. In addition to that, we have to provide at least 30 days during non-student days of educational opportunities and enrichment.
Is that with our caps? Is that where the money's going to be going to our caps?
Correct, correct. So just to, just to add, the, the two years is, we receive, this is an ongoing apportionment. So we receive the money, every year we'll receive money. However, the money for 202122 this year, because there was late information emerging on, on the uses, the planning, et cetera, they've actually extended that we can expend this, this year's dollars, not only this year, but also next year. And then similarly, the funding that they're projecting for next year, which Mr. Tillman mentioned, that a previous board member, which is estimated to be about $59 million, those dollars are going to be enabled to be expended next year as well as the following year. The, yeah, the program itself will not be audited until the 202324 year.
So my next question is, this money in these categories will not be swept up into the general fund? These are dedicated monies that have to be spent accordingly.
Yeah, so if we, if we went back to the multi-year projections for the combined general fund, these dollars would fall in that restricted ending fund balance only to be used for those programs.
My last question or comment is, I know that our CAPS program is, needs a lot of people to, not just CAPS people, you know, to run the program, but also the facilitators that, and I hope that we are providing enough funds so that they can build the infrastructure of facilitators and so forth. I, I, I hope that, I know, because we expanded it, so in expanding it, you need personnel. So I hope that we are supporting them and helping them and funding them, and I don't know if we have to raise the money. I, I don't know if we have to raise the salary to, to get people to, to, you know, to apply. I, I would like to, you know, I'd like for you guys, especially Cabinet, to let us know if we have to increase the amount, just like we did with the, with the substitute teachers. They said, yeah, okay, are you shaking your head? Yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah, so we, we are in process of evaluating our vendor contracts because we know that they struggle to hire individuals, so many of them are increasing their hourly rate. So we're working through that. But in addition to that, we're also working with internal folks so that we can grow the CAPS program as far as being able to support the vendors and support the school sites. So we're looking at developing additional staffing, but that's still in development.
And this money can be used for that, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Correct.
Okay, and then I had a couple other questions on, was it page five? I don't know. Let me look, I'm sorry. I have it on my phone. It's not on here.
It's part of the attachment.
Can you? Oh, I don't see the attachment on here. It's not on mine, I'm sorry. I don't see it at all. I don't know why, but I don't get the attachments on here, on my, my screen. So it says here that we will maintain, we're able to maintain a 24 to 1, right, with K3?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. And K, actually TK3, right?
TK is actually, and Dr. Funches can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe TK is 20 to 1.
And then can you explain to me that last, I'll read it to you, the estimated grade span adjustment funding for fiscal year 202122 is $15,933,783. And then it says the cost of implementing class size reduction exceeds the revenues received by the state for this purpose.
Yes, absolutely, I can explain that. So in terms of our funding, by grade level spans, we receive a base grant funding, but for our TK3 and for our 912, we receive a, an augmented amount. And the TK3 augmentation is to fund the lower class sizes, and the 912 is actually to help fund the expenditures for the complexity of a high school in terms of the programs. So when you look at that, $15.9 million, that is a combination of the grade spans for our TK through third and our 9 through 12, so that's what we receive. But in terms of maintaining class size reduction, what we receive as a portion of that augmentation is actually about a little over 12 million, and our class size reduction is almost $16 million. So it's inadequate to fund the full cost.
So we provide the extra?
That is correct.
So that's, you're just giving us the amount of how much it costs?
Correct.
But we have it in our budget and it's in here.
Correct.
So we're okay.
Yes.
Okay, all right. I think, I had other questions, but I'm okay. I, I went to page, I think you explained them, they were on page 23, 24, and 25, but I, you explained them. It was the, the, why you use red?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Why did you use red? It was just to mark the changes, right?
So, red, red is intended to show a, a negative change in budget, where the blue was to show a positive change in the budget.
Right.
And then, I know there's no more questions, but I would just thank you. There's a lot of work that goes into preparing that report. Our fiscal team and Trias and her team put that together, and we never think anybody reads it, so we appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, I read everything, by the way. So, okay, I, I, I just wanted to clarify the red and, and all the different, but it's, but we have enough money, that's all.
We do.
Okay, great, thank you.
All righty, thank you, Dr. Flores, and thank you, Mr. Solins, for fielding all those very insightful questions. So we will move on to 9.1, board members' comments, and we will be starting with Dr. Rogers and moving our way from right to left.
All right, thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Just a couple comments. One was, I was really excited, had the opportunity, I think it was last party, I got a chance to attend the Best Buddies Prom, and it was great. I mean, it was a great event to attend, to see our kids just enjoying themselves and with the staff, and so I enjoyed that, had the opportunity also to attend the Dream Academy, which I don't know if everyone's familiar with the Dream Academy, but I know there has been some, some collaboration with the district where those students that have parents that are incarcerated, and I know that's a big, it's a big concern that we have throughout the county as well as working with supports. And the, the wonderful thing about it is, many of you know Kenny Clark also shared his story. You know, he grew up here, went to our schools, ultimately graduated in that other district, but, but again, he, he shared his story, and those kids were really gravitating to that, so I was very happy about that. And then lastly, and I won't, I know you said you're, you're going to give us an opportunity as a board to look at, you know, the things that we, if there's funds to shift, because I noticed that the wellness section, and I don't, and that's probably just because it's just there under LCAP, but the dollar amount- just there under LCAP, but the dollar amount just seemed kind of small. And also, even in our multilingual line item was about, I think it was about a million something. But the reason why that caught my eye is because Dr. Rodriguez had told me about our, it's, is the Vietnamese program that we have? I didn't even know we had that, and I'm sure we probably were told it one time, but, but then when I heard about it again, I was like, man, we need to make sure that we're providing these supports to, to the programs that we currently have, ensuring those up and make sure that we can help those students. And that's true, right?
Now, the multilingual, trilingual program at Belvedere.
It's at Belvedere, yeah.
Correct, great program.
So, again, those are my comments, and again, I think you all have captured in the notes, but I'll say it again, I know we talked about the facilities, uses contract, coming back to us, discussion on that, as well as our contracts, so I'll bring it up for the record. Thank you, those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers, Dr. Flores.
I just wanted to share that I participated in Reading Across America. It was so much fun reading to the kids. They were hilarious. I, I thought I was just reading to one or two classes, but on Zoom, I was reading to the whole district. So, I thought, I said, oh, I'm reading to the whole district, okay. And I read in Spanish, and I don't know if you guys know this, I, I wrote a book, I wrote many books, children's books, but I wrote this one called Mud Tortillas. So, I, it's a true story, and I read it in Spanish. The kids thought that I was, it was about me as an older sister. I deceived my sister into eating a mud tortilla, and they thought that was horrible, that I was a brat, and they even told me I was a brat. And they asked me how old I was. I said, I was five. So, I, I really didn't know that I was being a brat. I just, you know, wanted to make a mud tortilla. Anyway, so, anyway, it was so much fun. And then I got to go to Vermont last Friday, and I got to read live, and my husband also went and read. And then in one class, they asked us to, they wanted to interview us, and they, this is hilarious, they asked him if he was a movie star. And so, he said, no, and, and then they said, well, you look like that guy in Stand and Deliver, you know, Edward James Olmos. And, and then they said, because you have white hair. And then they asked me, and then, why don't you have white hair? And I said, because I dye it. And they go, oh, my mom does that, okay. So, that was, it was so cute. I just love being with the kids. And they were just, you know, and they want to write stories, and they want to, you know, read more, and I think we should all do that more often. It was fun. Anyway, I also went to, I, I went to D LAC, and I always only, I only got to go to one day of the, the FLI, but it was wonderful to, to be there. It was, it was really heartwarming, and, and also got to see the new D LAC, you know, leadership, so it was great. And then I also got to attend the literacy task force. Ms. Applegate, your team is incredible. The depth and breadth of the work that they're doing is commendable. Board, it is just fabulous. I, I mean, I just, I was so impressed with all of them. I mean, they have little details, you know, about building libraries, about, you know, strategies, how, how you're going to streamline, you know, our literacy, you know, components that we need to do, what we're going to do with our kids that aren't, you know, reading at grade level. It, it was really, really great. I really appreciated it. And then I attended a webinar today that was on community schools, and Superintendent Thurman was on it, and it's a group from DC, reading through third grade. It was really powerful. They're going to have more community school webinars. I'll, I don't know who I should forward it to. I'll forward it to you, Mr. Irvin and, and the Cabinet, because, you know, it, it was very powerful in terms of, you know, they were featuring California, by the way, as community schools, and how reading through third grade, they felt that we're working holistically with families, family engagement with everyone. So, it was powerful, and of course, our superintendent of schools shined, so he was, he did really well. And the last thing I'd like to do is, I'd like to share this book by Dr. Goldie Mohammed. It's called Cultivating Genius, and it's an equity framework for culturally and historically responsive literacy. And what she outlines is, in terms of historically responsive literacy, is African-American families used to meet at, in, at homes, adults, and they would engage in, like, literature circles or literacy. And so, she has taken that and outlined very, very concrete pillars in terms of what we need to do to implement that. And then the second book is by Dr. Socorro Herrera, who, it's a second edition, Biography Driven Culturally Responsive Teaching, and it crosses cultures, you know, gender, time, history, and, and it's, you know, biographies teach us a lot, and, and about people's character, about their values, and what, what drives them, right? In terms of making, you know, society better. And so, I, I really love it. I shared it with Ms. Applegate, so that you can share it with our, our literacy team, so that'll be good. And that's it, thank you. Oh, and one last thing. CABE, on Friday, April first, all school board members are given a free link to participate in our, in our program. So, I don't know, Karen, do I just send you the link so that then whoever wants to participate can have the link, but you're welcome to, and, you know, to please join us, and it's, you know, gratis to our board members, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, Mr. Tillman, Vice President Tillman. No comment, and so that saved us our minute there. All right, Ms. Saviles?
Hi, yeah, thank you, Dr. President Wyatt. Just a couple things. Again, I want to congratulate, you know, our standing, outstanding achievement awardees earlier today. I also want to thank the San Bernardino Valley Community College. They had an event this past week, the Wonderful World of STEM by the STEAM Department. I am pleased to say that we had three of our high schools attend that event. Among them were Pacific, Pacific High School, Cajon High School, and Middle College High School. That was really nice. Also, I attended the Royal Valley Military Ball a couple weeks ago. That was my first, it was really fun. Really enjoyed, you know, getting on the dance floor with the, with the high school students. Also, I would like to bring back an, an action item on the agenda, to have a policy on an established end time of our board meetings. I know that last time we talked about it, ten was not something that the board was willing to entertain, but I would like to see that come back and maybe have us discuss it so that we can add an established end time to that. Also, I would like to, I don't know if there's current policy on certain special education areas like timeframes to respond to, to respond on I E Es, independent evaluation plans, and or translation of documents. So, I know that the law doesn't have, you know, specific timelines for that. It just says, you know, that the district shouldn't delay it, but it doesn't specifically say what that means. But I think we can adopt a policy as a board to where we establish certain parameters to guide our special education department in those areas. Also, I would like to remind us about having an attorney present at all, at all of our meetings. So, again, just kind of bringing that up. And then, finally, where is, I was wondering if we have a final report on the after-school providers? So, you know, I know that we were going to do some, some looking into that, and I wanted to see if we had the final report for that available to us. And if so, when can we get that presented to us? Aside from that, that's it.
And Ms. Saviles, which one was that that you just asked?
The final report on the after-school providers. So, we were going to look into, right, because we're looking into the contracts, and we had extended it this year, but that's going to be coming up here shortly again, right? And so, we want to make sure that we have that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saviles. And I'll try to go through mine quickly. Got a few here. First of all, just, you know, I did hear some public comments tonight that I want us to make sure we follow up on. When was the town hall meeting? And I was not present at that, I apologize, but try to always make sure we have a balanced perspective on presentation, so all voices are represented and heard. Same thing with the, the black asphalt, I heard some comments and concerns about Chavez Middle School and Golden Valley Middle School, if we could follow up on that. Wanted to request a athletic strategic plan update presentation, possibly in May, so that's a few months away, if we could do that. I know I've been participating in those meetings as often as I can, and there are, it'd be nice to have an update brought to the board. We also talked about board top ten. You know, I did talk to Ms. Cunningham about that, and I know we've talked about it as well. They're kind of outdated, so we might need to see, see what they were, and then maybe go from there. You know, we might have to redevelop the, the board top ten, since some of those are pretty outdated, three, four years old, but it'd be good to have that as a reference point. And then, next thing, activities now that I get to go to. I get to see the honor choir, which was nice, because we had the honor band, honor orchestra and honor choir, which I do believe Mr. Irvin's daughter was participating in that, and dad was there, so it was great to see him there as dad, not our superintendent, but he was there for both, so great job to your daughter. Chief Polino gave a fantastic, where's he at? Where's Chief, he's down there. Fantastic presentation to our local crossroad rotary club here in San Bernardino. Great job, Chief, want to tell you thank you for that. Just to our staff, I know there's, you know, there obviously has been change this week with the, the mask change and having the opportunity to wear, not wear a mask, and I have talked to some folks out there, and some are glad they don't have to wear one, and others still, you know, are wearing them, and, you know, there's some anxiety out there still, so folks, please just be kind to one another and patient with each other, and always exercise safety. I think we don't need to say that, but I'm going to remind us out there that that is a choice for us, and that we've seen it out in the crowd today, and even here up on the dais, which is nice, because we have the opportunity to make choice, but just to always be safe and to respect one another for that decision that we make. Didn't get to go to Best Buddies, darn it, because I was actually working myself that night, and boy, I loved that event. And Dr. Rogers, I'm glad you got to go. Same with FLI. I know I wanted to get to that too, and I didn't get a chance to go to that because I had the wrong link on the first day, and then the next two days I couldn't go, because I was just busy, so. Reason why I bring those up is because we've heard our board attending a lot of events, you know, and folks see us sometimes just up here, but we're out there in our community, and, and we really do care about kids, and I want to emphasize that, that we do care about kids. If we didn't want to, we wouldn't be there, right? And so, we are out there participating in these events, attending these events, and really having a good time, let me just say that, really enjoying it, and, and seeing what our district is doing for our kids above and beyond, not just during the normal day, but way beyond into the evening and even on the weekends. So, I want to compliment our staff and our students and our family and our board for always going above and beyond for our kids. So, thank you to my colleagues as well as our staff, students, and parents. And let me see if I forgot anything. Oh, Read Across America. Dr. Flores, I, I didn't get a Zoom audience, so I'm a little bit zealous of you, I'm going to say that. I'm kind of glad, because my conversation, my reading went way off on a tangent with the classroom. We had, like, fun conversation, I think I read like five minutes and talked for about an hour, so, but it wasn't me, it was the kids actually talking. So, thank you to Vermont Elementary for inviting us, and I know our former interim superintendent was there, Dr. Volkmer and his wife and his son, and I think even Mr. Alejandre might have been there, county superintendent. Dr. Iskavell was there, Mr. Solins was there, and if I missed anybody, I apologize, but boy, we had a, Dr. Ari is, all right, and Dr. Menades. Great, oh, oh, and Ms. Applegate as well, so amazing turnout. Dr. Funches, you too? Well, gosh darn, we just filled the house, let me say that. And again, that's the kind of support that I love seeing from our, our staff and our board and our community for our children at Read Across America. I, I'll tell you what, I had time of life, that's probably the highlight of my month, if not more, but it was a lot of fun reading with those kids, and boy, they asked some great questions. And then they asked some questions like, oh, I didn't ask that question, but no. But I had a lot of fun, so thank you to our, our team over there at Vermont, great job, and to our colleagues and our friends and our community members that came as well. We even had a WWE or some sort of wrestling champion there with his belt and fireman, and, you know, all those are pretty cool jobs, you know, and I'm not going to lie, those are some pretty cool jobs, so. But thank you again to our team and just to everyone out there. Again, we appreciate you and look forward to finishing our year strong. Thank you. And we'll move on to, oh, Dr. Rogers.
You mentioned on the public comments, but we want to put in there about those students and the caps to make sure we get the follow-up on that.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Yeah, the, um, what do we call them, the?
The graduation hats.
The graduation, somebody help me out here. Mortar boards, the caps, the ones you throw in the air, they don't really throw them in the air as much anymore, but, yeah, that was a great point brought up by our student.
With that, on that, and then, and then they also said that that resolution was current, so.
I don't know where that came from, but, you know, and I really don't care where it came from, to be honest with you, let's just fix it, please, you know, if we can. That's like a law, but I don't think it is, let's fix it. Dr. Iskavell said the one thing I heard too, you know, a lot of kids put their college, they have the future on their hats, and just all kinds of really neat things, and I enjoy looking at them, I'm not going to lie. As long as it's not indecent or disrespectful, I'm all for it, so. Thank you, Dr. Rogers, for that reminder. All right, Superintendent Irvin, nine point two.
A couple of things. One, I wanted to say congratulations to Keith Brockey of Royal Valley High School, who earlier this year was recognized as Teacher of the Year for our region, but who has now been recognized statewide as the California League of High School Teacher of the Year. Mr. Brockey is in a, yeah. We didn't hear anybody in the audience clapping, but thank you out there. Yeah. Mr. Brockey is an exceptional teacher, and his recognition as Teacher of the Year demonstrates the quality of teaching found throughout the district. And then, you know, we want to recognize our own Mrs. Anna Applegate, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. She has been chosen by the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools to receive the Legacy Award this year at their virtual multilingual recognition celebration on April twenty-second of two thousand twenty-two. This award recognizes the dedication of those individuals who have made a difference in the lives of students learning under another language, learning another language. Ms. Applegate is specifically being recognized for outstanding contributions to improving the achievement of English learners. So, again, congratulations. Let me hear the gallows. And then also this week, our students and employees obviously were able to make the choice about whether or not to wear masks, you know, to school or work, and, and so the board, once again, I think we all agree, made a wise decision regarding the management of the pandemic in our district. And so, I think we all here within the district want to thank the board, and we want to thank the students, parents, and employees of the district as well. I think your mutual respect up here on the board and accepting of each individual's choice about wearing a mask made the transition smooth for all of us. We had no issues with that transition at all. There was no trend, there was no issues. And so, and we know that each person has his or her own reason for wearing a mask or not wearing a mask, and that's up to those individuals. But we are proud, ladies and gentlemen, of our district who recognize and respect each other's reasons and choice. And a couple of other things on the caps contract, so, yeah, we, we were, so we'll bring back the caps contract, I think the audit will be done. It was supposed to be done in April, but, but we know that the contractor that we're working with, we asked them to expedite that, and we were looking at, you know, bringing it back for an extension, but I think Dr. Iskavell had a chance to chat with them, and I think they're going to try to expedite and get it done sooner. Is that correct, Dr. Iskavell, in terms of the caps audit? Because I know it was supposed to be late April, but now we're going to have to expedite that a little bit. What's that?
Early to mid-April.
Right, but we were bringing back an extension, because I think they needed additional time, so we still may bring back that extension, I'm not sure. It may, but I, I don't know, I think that was in, was that in your department, Dr. Rodriguez? So, right now, we're hoping that they use the current hours to finish up, is that correct? Okay, so that's where we're at with it. And then also, I did have And then also, I did have a chance to meet with SBTA representative, Dr. Menares and I, and the conversation went well. And a lot of the conversation, again, was around our curriculum and suction alignment project, and then collaboration, but I think, Dr. Menares, we came to a real good place, it was a very productive meeting, and we're looking forward to some next steps, but it was great, because it was able to bring some clarity to some of the things that we as a district were asking, but also had an opportunity to hear from them on what some of the issues and concerns that they had, and then I think we got to a good place, and so we'll provide the board with a high-level update in the Friday update, but I do think, Dr. Menares, I think, from your perspective, as an outsider looking in, I think you said it was very productive, is that correct?
Yes, it was very productive, it was, it's always nice to sit down with our educators and hear what's happening down at the school level.
Yeah, and I think we'll get to a good place in terms of some next steps with them regarding collaboration, and then also on that project itself. And then the other thing is, I'll wrap it up here with, I know at the last meeting, you know, our team, you know, brought forward our Framework for Excellence that the board had a chance to review, and it really culminated eight works, eight months of work, right? And we had an opportunity to have some, you know, all of our, a large number of our staff participate in it, we laid out our five goals, we clearly laid out the priorities, we laid out, I don't think we got a deep dive into the strategies, but we, but we also talked about some of how we're gonna measure those, you know, those goals that we laid out. And as we got our second, our interim assessments, or our NWA assessments, it clearly shows, Ms. Applegate, I know we talked today, is that we do have a sense of urgency, looking at the results the second time around, there is a sense of urgency, and I think that the, as we look at the numbers, as we look at, as this transition, as we come to this endemic, and we start to transition, it's clear that this, that, that, that is, this is our call to action, to take action, because I still, and I know there's a lot of disagreement with me on that, but on a positive note, I do still think that there's a lot of good teaching and learning taking place in the classroom. I think we all see that, and I see that after being in a large number of classrooms, I had a chance to share it with our union partners. But I do still think there's a, there's a sense of urgency, and I do think that this is an opportunity to take the district to a place where it's never been. And, and so I think last board meeting, when we presented our Framework for Excellence, I think the team and, and all the individuals who were involved with developing and building it out, and designing it and creating it, were all excited, and I know that we couldn't really get a full consensus from the board, but I will say though, that if the board clearly wants to take the district to the highest level of excellence, then, and we do have a sense of urgency, then we have to take this opportunity for a call of action, because if not, we'll just, they'll be still having the same conversations 20 years from now, that we should have, could have, would have, but we haven't, we didn't do a thing. So, you know, and again, my role is just to present, but if, you know, I know if the board desire that the Framework for Excellence is not the direction, we understand that, and I respect that, and we're good with that. But at some point, there's gotta be a conversation, whether it's this year, or next year, or whenever, that at what point do we really start having deep conversations about how do we take things to the next level? Because I still think we can. And, and I will say, on behalf of the team, I had a chance to debrief with them, they truly still believe that they can take the district to another level. But again, it's gonna, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a collaborative effort on everybody's part, our associations, our parents, our students, our teachers, our community partners, our board. Unless it's unified across the board, then it's just a battle. But I will say this though, students can't wait for us to get it together. I mean, I'll just keep it real, they can't wait for us to get together, but I understand that, and I know that I'm the linchpin, and I'm the one who's holding, I'm in the middle of saying, we gotta do this, and I know that I gotta bring people along, and it's been a little slow, but in terms of, of, you know, because I do move at a fast pace, so I don't think we can all deny that, right? I do, I do move at the speed of sound, and sometimes, so we are taking a step back a little bit. I think our team of all of us, we talked about, how do we take a step back and take another look at what the next steps are? But I just want the board to know, each and every individual board member to know that this is our call to action. We are in a, in a crisis where it comes to a sense of urgency, and we either do it now, or, or we just continue to talk about it, and then those third graders, 10 years from now, or 12 years from now, when they've gone and moved on, we'll be having those same conversations that we should have and could have, but we didn't, so. I'll stay committed until my last day here in the district, I'll stay committed to trying to do what's in the best interest of kids, and, but I will say though, that we've definitely got to get our entire board to be, not just the board, because the board, I think, have done a lot of great things, but we got to get our entire board, our community, everyone, all of our stakeholders, all of our educational partners, to all be in agreement that we can do this, and then we can show that you can be a large urban district, but you can still be the best of the best. There's no reason why we can't, and the tools are there, we're ready, but again, we just got to get to a place to where we get everyone committed and on the same page. So with that, I'll turn it back over.
Alrighty, thank you, Ms. Irvin, we'll move on to 10.1, Approval Personnel Report. That's presented, board. Alright, it's been, it's been moved and properly second, any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Alright, 10.1 carries, move on to 10.2, Second Period Interim Financial Report, as of January 34th, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, any discussion? Alright, let's vote. Alright, motion carries, we'll move on to 11.0, Consent Items, 11.1, Approval Consent Items.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to pull 11.15, because it pertains to Kabe.
11.15?
11.15, and 11.27, just to make a comment.
11.27, any others?
That's it. Oh, for me.
Alrighty, other board members, any? Alright, I'm, I'm actually, I rarely pull, but I'm gonna pull some for just clarification.
You're still pulling, right?
I am.
Yeah.
11.24, 11.25, 11.26, and if I can bundle them together, that'd be nice, they're all about special ed. I didn't, I think that's it. So let's go ahead and vote. Sorry, Dr. Flores. Alright, motion carries as amended, we'll go ahead and go to 11.15.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Alright, we do have a majority vote of four, so motion carries on 11.15. We'll move on to 11.24, 25, 26, those are the ones that I pulled. Just discussion on those about, you know, obviously, we're contracting with quite a few different agencies to provide services for our students with disabilities, and between the three, it's about $1.75 million. So my question is, is it just that we don't have capacity, or is it that we're looking for a different option or opportunity, I guess, for our students and their families?
These are for more specialized, more restrictive environments for students, so these are for students that we no longer have the ability to serve within the district. These contracts are in place, because we don't know when we might have a student that would be referred into a program, so we do need to have a blanket agreement, so that when a team decides to place a student in an alternative setting, it can be done in a timely manner to meet deadlines within the IEPs.
Right. And they are not.
Correct, they're all not to exceed.
I see that.
We have not to exceed numbers on there as well, just to be safe, but.
Alrighty, well, I appreciate that, and I think, you know, it's always good for our folks to hear out there as well, Ms. Sivios?
Just really quickly, to kind of follow up on that, I'm curious, I'm curious to, and maybe, you know, future, you can present to us, how are these like determinations made in terms of like change of placement? And I'm curious to even in change of placements within the district, right? So I know that not all schools have the same programs, so not every school has an SDC moderate severe or mild moderate, so I'm curious to, I guess, know what schools have what programs, and then how determinations are made to change, like what does that process look like internally? How do we decide when a, when a child is going to move from one? I know it has to be done through the IEP team, that's not what I mean, I'm talking like about the internal process, does that make sense?
Yeah, so just for clarification, would you like that in a presentation? Or would you like to set up a meeting individually to go over that?
I mean, if my colleagues want to hear on it, presentation's fine, I'm okay with a personal, you know, meeting to kind of go over that, and then maybe afterwards, share it to the whole board. I'm just personally more curious to find out how those changes happen.
We can set something up.
Alrighty, any other questions or comments on those items? Okay, let's vote.
I need you to do them individually, please.
That's what I was about to ask you. Alright, 11.24.
Vote.
Again.
It's been motion properly second, and I believe there's no further discussion, let's vote.
Dr. Flores?
Okay, thank you. Alright, motion carries, 11.25.
I'm moved.
It's been moved and properly second, no more further discussion, let's vote. Alright, motion carries, move on to 11.26.
So moved.
Again.
It's been moved and properly second, no further discussion, let's vote. Alright, motion carries, we'll move on to 11.27, Dr. Flores.
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment. Dr. Carnegie was president of Cal State for many, many years, he was my president, I absolutely loved him, and this was a dream of his, you know, infant toddler literacy and helping families, and I just wanted to honor him for his vision and so forth. I mean, he, he was very, very much, he actually wanted to have a children's hour on our TV station to do literacy, you know, stories and everything, never happened, because of, of course, money, but he was such a proponent of helping families, and I just wanted to recognize him for that, and also, I just wanted to ask a question, these home visits will be for families that already have the kids? Or would, are they new families? I just wanted clarification.
So, Dr. Flores, we do have two representatives from the program here, if you could come to the dais.
Oh, welcome back. I will say thank you for being patient with us and staying so long. Actually, this is pretty early.
Not even 10 yet.
I know, we're doing okay, welcome.
So, so first of all, thank you for, sorry, first of all, thank you for, Dr. Flores talking about Dr. Carnegie, and this really was his, his dream to, to combat gaps in achievement, low income versus their wealthier, their wealthier counterparts, by teaching families right when those babies were, right before they were born, up till they're five years old. And so, the home visits is a very particular curriculum that is endorsed by the County of San Bernardino, and it is open to any child who's in our program. We've been doing home visits virtually, because of COVID, through our nurturing parenting program, and this will train people in a trauma-informed manner, in a, a manner that is culturally competent to go into the homes and, and check on families, and, and to help them get the services they need. They're not social workers, but they are checking in and developing relationships. One of the main focuses of the kids program is to connect parents with one another, so that they can create a culture-positive parenting and learning that will stay with them. Lots of friendships have been formed, and then, you know, and to keep them connected to the school, and all the services they can get through the schools, where, whether it's special ed, or Atlas, or, you know, obviously TK and pre-K, we're gonna be out at the TK Enrollment Fair, we're super excited about it, and so, yeah, so this is, this is one more.
And how many families do you serve?
That's an excellent question, we have several hundred in our, in our, and always expanding. Our, we launched this year, we have our parenting classes, and then we launched this year, our, we offer free licenses for ABC Mouse and Frog Street Pre-K at Home, and that's been very popular, and so it's been growing our basis. So several hundred families, and I'm sorry, I don't have an exact number for you.
That's good, I just, it was nice to see that Dr. Carnegie's, you know, dream is still going, so thank you.
And Marilyn Carnegie's still involved.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So moved.
Alrighty, I'll, it's been moved and properly second, discussion? Alright, let's go ahead and vote. Hey, motion carries, and just want to say, Dr. Flores, thank you as well for honoring Dr. Carnegie, and, you know, not just him, but also his legacy will continue with, with his work and the work of the foundation, so much appreciated. I know it's an emotional moment, thank you. Alright, 12.0, Review of Board Requests, 12.1, Staff Overview Items, Updates Requested, Ms. Antovetos, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, and I would also like to echo the appreciation for recognizing Dr. Carnegie. He definitely was a special man, and an amazing leader, and a valued part of the Making Hope Happen Foundation Board as well, so we're very happy that his legacy is continuing. I have 18 items that you requested or asked about this evening, so let's start with Mr. Danny Tillman, echoed by Dr. Flores and Dr. Dottie Rogers, asking about that we reconsider the policy that prevents students from decorating graduation caps, so that one was captured first. Dr. Scott Wyatt, also echoed by Dr. Flores, asked for us to bring information back about the options around the timing and implementation of the late start. Dr. Flores asked. Dr. Flores asked that we would provide additional details about the progress towards spending each of the SOR and expanded learning funding sources. And I know that there was some discussion back and forth, but several times, Mr. Solins said, I'll get the details, I'll bring that back to you. So, I wanted to capture that. Dr. Flores asked that we would share the progress or our plans for hiring paraprofessionals. And I know you specifically talked about literacy support in that question. Dr. Flores asked how we were supporting our caps vendors so that they could hire the youth leaders that they need and asked about whether we're growing capacity in line with our funding for them. Dr. Gwen Rogers reminded us that she's asked for the facility use report, or the facility use report, and that she's also asked for the request for information about district Dr. Barbara Flores asked or recommended that the district participate in some of the community schools presentations. She's gonna share information about that. Also, recommended a couple of books for our teams to read, one Cultivating Genius and the other Biography Driven Culturally Responsive Teaching. Dr. Flores then asked that the school board would consider, or school board members would consider attending the Cabe virtual event on April 1st and that there was a link to participate in that for free. Ms. Myra Sabios asked that we would consider, or that the board would consider establishing an end time for meetings. Also, to consider a policy about the timeframe for the district to respond to questions in their IEP or to get them translated. And then also reminded the board that she's made a request for an attorney to be present at all meetings. There was a request also from Ms. Sabios that we have a final report on the after-school providers, which Mr. Urban noted would be available in late April. Dr. Scott Wyatt encouraged that there be balanced perspective offered in town hall presentations. Dr. Wyatt also asked that we would follow up on issues about the asphalt at middle schools and requested an update on the athletic strategic plan. Also requested that we would revisit the top 10 list, realizing that it may be out of date and to consider developing a new priority list. And then Ms. Myra Sabios asked that we would provide a report on special education, especially the change of placement process.
Did I hear about the resolution on there?
I did not get that, so.
Okay.
Please, please share.
The San Bernardino County one that we, we talked about earlier, just looking into?
Sure, absolutely.
Remember she, the speaker that spoke about the, the resolution that's going on at the county?
I'll add that on there. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, in regards to our resolution and their.
Yes, and theirs, and theirs is more detailed as to what the, what the ask is and what they're stating, you know, to the states about the voice of choice.
And then also, and then also there was a formal request for potential Brown Act violation on October 5th. I did capture that from the public speaker for follow-up, but I didn't, it didn't come from a board member, so that's why I hadn't read that out. But I'll definitely, it's definitely on the list. So, thank you.
Alrighty, thank you, Ms. Ontevados. 13.0.
Move to adjourn.
It's been moved and properly second. Everyone have a good evening. We shall adjourn.